And Town Board, you are live.
Thank you, LTV. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, January 7th. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Present.
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 Present. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this morning, we start with the public portion, and we ask you to kindly keep your comments to three minutes. And then we have four topics on the agenda. The first is bids with Jeannie Caroza, and then we're going to have an after-hearing discussion. We had had five public hearings on December 19th for Community Housing Fund Project Awards, so the board will be discussing that, and Eric will be there to help, you know, manage that. Then we're going to have a conversation about the 2025 sanitation fees, and that'll be led by Tom Flight and Steve Lynch, and then the Town Board liaisons for 2025. So Jeannie, you want to start us off with, I'm sorry, public portion? Anybody here that wants to address the board for public portion? Jody, is there anyone on the line?
Right now, there's no callers on the line.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna go to bids. You're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have a couple of bids today, and also the resolutions on for the acceptance of them, possibly. The first bid is for food service and kitchenware items, December 2024. Sam Tel and Son and Pueblo Hotel Supply, DBA Gradies are the apparent low bidders for that. And then we also have the acceptance of the bid for the Stephen Hans Path Multi-Use Field. The apparent low bidder is the Land Tech Group. The total, including the base bid and all the alternates, which include bleachers, scoreboard, and lighting, is a total cost of $2,839,350. And that's all I have for today. You want to do it now? You want to talk a little bit about?
Sure, I will. Yeah, so Jeannie, thank you so very much. It's individual, it's done major projects in town with Kathy and other board members here then, too. I think having this bid for the Stephen Hans Path Multi-User Project come back, the bids came back very tight, compared to what we were seeing them during COVID, where individual contractors didn't know where diesel prices were going to be, products prices were going to be, they're all over the board. I think we're getting a lot more value right now for the town and residents' money, particularly with a project that is going to be here for all the residents of the town of East Hampton. So I thank your department on that.
And I just wanted to also make one more comment, and they came in well under.
Yeah, right there, they came in well under what the engineer's estimate was going to be, and they came in very tight also then, too, and the contractors are all very reputable. So I think that votes very well as we move forward with, you know, our budgeting for any future purchases, projects, or acquisitions that we need to. So maybe, maybe we are outside of where this COVID era of purchasing was for the town and costs, but overall, this is one of the first larger projects we've done right now, that we've seen that everything is coming in way under what we're anticipating. So hopefully, there's more to come for that then, too.
And I just, we should note that because the base bid came in under, we were able to do all three alternates, right? So we're going to be able to do the bleachers, the scoreboard, and the lighting. So it's really great to be able to complete that project. And Land Tech is the contractor we used for the ball fields. So they're familiar with...
The facility, the engineering. Land Tech also did our facility there. They've also done other projects for us. They did, I believe, the spring school and also the village also recently then, too. And so they know what it takes to get out here, work out here. But also, it's another addition to our recreational opportunities for our youth and for our seniors and our adults for the town of East Hampton. It's going to be a world-class facility, and we'll have some more news on that facility on Friday for everyone, too.
Great. Beautiful. Thanks, Jeannie. So what we're going to do, we're going to move the sanitation fee discussion up next, as Steve Lynch is here.
Yeah. Steve, I'm okay with you. I'm just going to introduce the topic, and then we can go into the changes. So just, you know, give people some background to sanitation department. You know, with regards to fees, 40% of our operating costs are associated with haulage for sanitation department. So one of the major changes we've seen in the last year coming is the closure of the landfill. So when we go out to bid for our haulage, we had budgeted for about a 10% increase. We're seeing a 17% increase coming back on what the bid came in at. So that's something we kind of look to address. Then there's just general operating costs increasing. You know, what gets hauled, it's our construction debris and our non-recyclables. So from a town's perspective, that accounts for almost 75%, sorry, 70% of all the volume that comes through the sanitation department. So it's getting hauled out. You're adding yard waste, which we recycle, that's 25%. You know, that's 95% of our waste accounted for. So that really means, outside of that, right now, we're only recycling about 5% of the waste we produce. What's important about that is, is that we get paid for our recyclables, you know, our cardboard, our mixed paper, they generate about $50 a ton in income to the town versus, you know, the fees we're having to pay to haul other stuff away. So, you know, as we go in and look at these changes, it's not something I think that I really kind of want to push, but we have to cover our costs. And if we're going to look to avoid future increases in pricing for haulage, it's on us as residents of this town to increase our recycling operations. So with that, Steve, I'm going to jump over to you to kind of walk through the changes we've got.
You want to go over the increases?
Yeah, sure, sure, sure.
You recommended the self-haul and permit fees to go to $130. That's a $10 increase.
Emery, can you go back one page? We need the first page.
Yeah, we could just zoom in, perhaps.
It says residential fees. Great. Thank you.
Right, the secondary permit would be 45, and it would be increased to $55. Seniors, we're going to leave them the same, not affect them at all. No permit self-hauler, it's going to go from $20 to $25. Recyclables with permit, no charge. Horse manure, leaves, grass for self-haulers, residential with a permit, no charge. Large brush vines, ornamental grass, and trees with a permit, it's going to go to $45 per yard. It was $115 per ton. We're going to change it to per yard, and it'd be $45 per yard. Brush, small bundle in 30-gallon cans, pass your cars, there's no charge, they come and take three bags. Disease brush is going to go from $165 a ton to $190 a ton, because that goes on the tiffin floor and has to be hauled away. Waste soil, there's no charge. Electronics, no charge. Extra-large appliances are going to go to $25 with a permit. It was $20. Large appliances are going to go from $10 to $15 with a permit, and small appliances are going to go from 5 to 10. And then tires, which is a real problem to get rid of. It's very expensive. So we're going from, on passengers and motorcycle tires are going to go from $4 to $10 with a permit. SUVs and light trucks are going to go from $7 to $10 with a permit. Heavy trucks are going to go from $20 to $30. And large bulk items, including furniture, is going to go from $165 a ton to $190 a ton. Scrap metal is going to go from 25, it's going to go up to $30 a ton with a permit. Construction and demolition, and the reason everybody says, well, you get paid for that, but there's a lot of handle that has to go on. So it's covered in a handle and fee. Construction and demolition debris is going to $190 a ton from $165. The no-permit commercial cart fee, right, is going to go from 25 to 30. Brush, vines, ornamental grasses, hedges, is going to go from $40 a yard to $45 a yard. Contaminated brush, again, is $190 a ton from $45 a yard. Manure and grass is going to go from $40 a yard to 45, and leaves and wood chips from 40 to $45. Tires and extra tires, if they're coming in a truck, it's $400 a ton. And then again, it's just a handle and charge. We're planning almost that to get rid of them. Extra-large appliances are going to go from 20 to 25. Large appliances from 10 to 15. Small appliances from $5 to $10 each. Mixed containers, glass, plastic tin, et cetera, is, it was 55 a ton, it's going to 190 a ton because of the cost of getting rid of it. It's stuff, a lot of it isn't recyclable. Mixed fibers, papers, and cardboard, $25 a ton, which is no increase in that. Mixed papers, no cardboard, again, $25 a ton, no increase. Newspaper, $25 a ton, no increase. Cardboard, no charge. Non-recyclable food waste is 100, going to go from $165 to $190 a ton. Steel containers, cut-off, 55-gallon drums, no increase, $5 each. 270, 275-gallon tanks, right, cut open, no increase, $25 each. 500-gallon tanks, cut open, no increase, $35 each. And 1,000-gallon tanks, no increase, $70 each. Scrap metal, no increase, $25 a ton. Construction and demolition debris, $190 a ton. The following is for picked-up materials. Okay, residential compost picked up, 30-gallon container a week, no charge. Double ground leaves is going from $20 a yard to $25 a yard. Mulch is going from $25, it's staying at $25 a yard. No increase. Unscreened compost is going from $50 a ton to $20 a yard. Screened compost is going from $25 a ton to $25 a yard. By doing everything by the yard, it makes it much easier for the scale, people in the scale and everything. And when it rains, everybody complains because they're paying extra, they're paying for the water that they're hauling out. So do everything by the yard this way.
And we started doing that, Steve.
Montauk residential fees, self-haul permit is going from 120 to 130, same as East Hampton. Secondary permit from 45 to 55, same as East Hampton. Seniors, no increase. No permit self-hauler fee from 20 to $25 a yard, same as East Hampton. Recyclables with permit, no charge. Leaves, lawn grass, no charge with permit. Brush, three bags or in a 30-gallon can in a passenger car, there's no charge with permit. Contaminated brush only goes to East Hampton only. Waste oil, no charge with a permit. Extra-large appliances and scrap metal, East Hampton only. Large appliances and scrap metal, $12 each, and it's going to be up to $15. Small appliances and scrap metal, $7 each, which is going to go to $10. And I think that covers it. Any questions?
All right, a couple of comments, if you don't mind.
Speak out, very hard.
No problem. I'll get a little closer, Steve. This is a regional issue that all the townships are having right now. I know Tom's aware of this, also some other board members. Deputy Supervisor Rogers, myself, went to a regional waste summit that the county executive put on last year with every single representative from all the townships. We are de minimis in the waste stream for Long Island, being East Hampton compared to some of the larger towns, but we all knew the greater effect eventually by having the Brookhaven close, the C and D, and the rising cost of carting right now was going to be a potential larger cost when it came back to our bids, which we just received back in December. And that's why we had a discussion on it at that time on there then, too. Where we have to land right now is that the town of East Hampton is actually an enviable position from Supervisor Panico, what he said at that time when Kate and I was there, that we are a sole-source separator here. The town of East Hampton and the residents do very well at separating their recyclables to give a chance to actually make money back on it. That doesn't happen far west on here, and that is habits. That is education that we have up here, and that's the lifestyle that we have. And it was nice to hear that when we were at that summit. When it comes to construction debris, everyone is in the same situation on Long Island right now, specifically Suffolk County. With Brookhaven closing, or upcoming closing, it's all going to be shipped off island then, too, and it's just going to cost a lot more. Most of the other municipal solid wastes will be turned back into the form of energy by either being incinerated. PPAs, a covent, coventa, I believe it might be a new name purchased recently then, too. But no matter what, there's got to be a landing spot here with some of our fees. We, as a municipality, have to provide services. And many of those times, the municipality takes a loss on those services to provide that, and I understand that. I think a couple of the things we're doing here, as far as your recommendations, Tom and Steve, changing everything to the yard compared to the ton makes sense. We've already been moving towards that already. Then, too, it's easier for our staff on there to go through and know what's coming across the scale in some of these situations on there. There's also not just the cost to remove the waste out of, move the waste, there's the cost to staff. We have great staff in your department down there, really, really do. I've been, I was at there 7:05 this morning, dropping off, you know, the stuff going across the scale because I wanted to get in before it's closed tomorrow or freezes because I, you know, I have my Christmas tree and everything, excuse me. Sidebar. The other one is, our facility is now aging then, too. We have to have DEC standards for our permitting right now. The back of the facility is looking spectacular because the Town Board has invested in the equipment to be able to give the staff the ability to mix mulch, take on other initiatives such as composting on there. The front of the house is doing the same. And then we have to do the same as far as upkeeping of our buildings at that facility, too. So there's a greater cost coming in. So once we know the background reason why we're discussing this, hopefully, it makes more sense for the residents and the day-trippers and the businesses to understand why there's going to be incremental costs to provide you with the same quality service that the town of East Hampton and the sanitation department is trying to do. So I wanted just to make sure that that was said because I do go to your department a lot, and I have a lot of discussions, and I go to Montauk also. It's probably one of the most well-used facilities as far as visitations of the residents in the town of East Hampton, and it's something that I don't think we can take for granted. But at the same time, we need to find out where the landing points with our costs are going to be.
So I'm on board with most of this. I know it's, we have to unfortunately raise fees because our fees become more expensive. The one I don't support and will not support is the primary self-hauler permit increase. I live in Springs, and I write off of Springs fireplace road, and I'm on that road a lot, and I see who uses those. It goes to the recycling center, and it's families like David's and everybody else. And I don't, I know that for these folks, the price of everything is going up. Local establishment that is really for local people, I see all the workers there every morning. The egg sandwiches have to go up a dollar in fee because of the price of eggs going up. And I don't think the burden of the amount of refuse that we're carting up should fall on those particular folks. And that's, that's the primary, secondary self-hauler permits are the ones I'm talking about. In lieu of that, however, I could reasonably see us adding something to the rental registry fee for sanitation. As, you know, in the summertime, you're looking at houses being rented out, 12, sleeps 12, sleeps 14. I'm sure your summer season is the majority of your fees, but the rest of the fees for the commercial carters and for commercial construction debris, et cetera, getting rid of all of the larger items and with consideration with what's happening with Brookhaven and the situation we're going to be in, other than those primary self-hauler fees, I'm good with these.
Just so you're aware, what's brought in in cars in their little bags is probably 12,000 to 13,000 tons a year. And maybe 3,000 or 4,000 tons is commercial. We get very little commercial because of our prices.
Yeah, I just think it's too tough. You know, the cost of everything is going up for those folks, and I just, you know, it's tough to, when groceries are going up, and this is going up, and this, to add another increase for that group.
Southampton used to run in the block with their bag program, and they've been down with me and looking, seeing what we're doing to see if they can switch over, do it like we're doing it. But they're really not set up because they don't take commercial garbage. That's what helps us. The commercial people help foot a lot of our, you know, handle a lot of our budgets, especially between the compost facility and the C and D, right? We're generating well over $1 million a year out of that just from the commercial people, which is a small percentage of the people using. So that's pretty good. And this year, it should increase by another 300,000.
How about, how's the construction debris? Is that, the construction debris, do you get a lot of construction debris?
Yes, we get a lot of construction debris. All the carpenters, they had their own little dump trails, you know. It isn't worth it for them to go up island. It's cheaper for them to come here because of travel time. And we're starting to get some commercial carters with construction debris because of the traffic and the time that it takes for a turnaround. You know, when you do the math, it's a little bit cheaper to dump here even though they're paying more money.
But then there's handling.
Yeah, because that's big stuff.
It's about a quarter of the total volume.
25%.
So just what Kate was saying, I definitely understand where you're coming from on there then, too. It's inflation, costs rising everywhere hurts everyone in the pocket. And like, to be honest, looking for a car, looking for a car for my family right now is painful right now. Looking for a used car sometimes is even more painful. You know, I have a young family. Costs are, try paying for college right now.
No, thank goodness. I don't have to.
Try paying for first tuition payment right now. I mean, I gag, I pray, is what I really do. Anyway, so last year, we start looking at the cost to incrementally raise the self-hauler permit. We did $5 was last year, and the discussion at that time was to increase $5 over three years to get to a $15 increase. So we weren't burdening the primary resident so much over so much time. I still would like to see a $5 increase, but I understand what the recommendation is coming from. If it's $10 now, but I wouldn't want to increase it anymore over the next couple of years, obviously, then, too, no matter what comes back on the bid. But it is something that, long-term, that I know we were starting to look at as we were anticipating this closure. But Kate, I understand exactly your comments.
Yeah, I do, too. And I think it's one of those challenging ones. I mean, I think, look, we have to, you know, take responsibility for our litter. We're seeing it on the roads with, you know, with what the interaction committee does, and, you know, even just household waste, that there is a cost associated with it. What we're trying to do here is kind of reflect what the cost is incurred by the town as a whole and, you know, meet those because, you know, we've had to cut a position from this department last year. You know, we continually do get complaints from residents that like, how can we make the sanitation site more presentable to the public? It's challenging because of the volume we do, but people require that. So, you know, mirroring these costs, these demands, I think the 130 is a fair ask. I think, you know, an extra $10 a year, it's not nothing, but, you know, in this town, it's the price for sandwich, almost a coffee, you know. It's not a huge ask for, you know, moving us to doing the right thing and managing this department in a way that we're kind of physically balancing these increasing costs with the needs and demands.
Yeah. I don't know if everyone is paying that much for a sandwich. Again, just have to come to Springs and see the establishments there, and that's my experience. So I just think if we raise all the other fees, I just don't want to put the burden on people who, you know, I don't self-haul, I use commercial service. And, but I'm pretty aware who goes there. And I just think that one fee, we can maybe adjust the rest of them and then see how that rolls out for us. And also then do the educational part of, you know, the composting, recycling. I don't think enough people probably... I don't think enough people probably recycle their cardboard, you know, and just get it in properly, and that helps us. So on the other side, education and also again, looking at, you know, like the, we have barely rental registry fees and, and that, that certainly I would imagine in the summer, you're seeing a lot more garbage than you are year round. So, you know, we could look at other ways to, to accommodate that.
Yeah, I'd say essentially, if you look at the annual flow of waste through the department in just previous years, say around 40 to 50% flows through July and August months, you know, on total. But it's not as peaked as other industries. Interestingly, there is, I think to Steve's point, a pretty solid year-round usage of the site because there's a lot of commercial. Sorry, I say, sorry, Steve, I'm saying.
Into the mic.
Apologies. I was just saying, there's a pretty solid year-round use of the site. We do see from a flow perspective, increased volumes in July and August with the peak tourist season, but it's not as much of a peak as you'd expect given other industries, correct? I mean, it's actually a pretty solid flow through the year.
I don't know, we're, it's from April through October.
Yeah.
Are our big months, and then December is a huge month.
Christmas.
Right, so, you know, better than six months of the year, that place is hopping.
Ian, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, any strong opinions. I certainly understand what.
Did you speak into your mic?
Yeah, I, I don't have a lot of strong opinions here. I trust Tom and Steve and the recommendations you've given. I also understand what Kate is saying. And, and I think it's important to note too, that it's not, that the permit fees apply to recycling as well as garbage. So even if somebody's doing everything perfectly and not generating a lot of waste, their, their fees would go up well. So with that said, I don't have strong opinions. I could accept the recommendation, keeping it as is or a compromise, as Dave maybe alluded to, $5. But otherwise, you know, the cost of things are going up, and I understand the, the need to increase the fees.
So I share concerns with the residential fees. Our family, our household is also a self hauler. So when we went from 115 to 120 in 2024, that was a 4% increase. Now we're looking for an 8% increase in one year to 130. My concern is that when we raised the fee last year, you would have assumed that our revenues would have gone up, but they didn't. We, we brought in less revenue in 2024 than.
I was understanding it was going to go up $5 a year.
Right. So I, I think, I'm not supportive of the $130 recommendation or increasing the secondary hauler permit 22% from $45 to $55. And I think when we, we're, I'm afraid that we're going to be creating a situation where people, yeah, it's, you know, the recommendation is only $10, you know, a couple of cups of coffee, but it's on April 1st, when that, when somebody has to go and write that check for $130, they feel it. And I, I don't think this is, this is the year to do that. I think what we need to do is I, you know, I know that the bulk is done in the passenger cars, not in commercial, but I think we need to be sensitive to the, the working folks that are using the recycling center. And increasing the no permit self hauler fee 25% to $25, I think we're asking for people to drop their garbage off at the, at, you know, the beaches. I think at some point you get to a point where you're like, I'm not spending 25 bucks to drop my garbage off.
Most of those people that are paying the no permit fee, that's because they come from, say, a garbage for Hampton.
Okay.
Because it's cheaper than doing the bags and they can throw everything away.
Got it. But I've also had families tell me that they can't afford to write the check for the permit and that they wind up using the, the daily, you know, self, the no permit rate, and it costs them more money over time, but that's just how their budget works. So, you know, I, I just think that we could be creating a situation where folks are going to, you know, we're going to see more garbage at our beaches and road ends.
And that is something that, you know, we are perpetually battling, the litter commit, litter action committee and certainly Parks and Recs that picks up our garbage at the beaches and other places is the amount of household trash that gets dumped there. And I just wouldn't want to see, you know, we have to do, we have to spend more money over here to pick up more of that and get it to the right place rather than people going there for this year. I mean, I'm open to, you know, future, but we did raise it last year and, and for me, I just don't want to see that particular fee increase, but I'm okay with everything else.
There's other one thing, we're also like with small appliances, that's a 100% increase. The large appliances is a 50% increase and the extra large appliances is a 25% increase. I mean, is it, I mean, you know, Steve, on the backend, if I'm dropping off, is my microwave a small appliance?
Yes.
So I'm going to pay $10 to drop off my microwave. My extra large, is that a refrigerator?
Huh?
Is a refrigerator an extra large appliance? Okay. I, I guess I'm, I'm more comfortable with that. I think that there may be a, something got disconnected here for commercial, for scrap metal, there's no increase, it stays at 25 a ton, but for self haulers, it's going up to 30. Was that the intent to have commercial haulers not have an increase and residential haulers to have an increase? You look at the top of page four, it says scrap metal, 2024, $25 a ton. And if you look at the first, the second page for, for self haulers.
No, they should match, they should both be 30, I apologize.
Okay, so commercial is going to 30.
Okay.
So, so I'm, I'm concerned with the, the permit fees, and I, I'm not supportive of, I mean, I, I could go to 125, I think 130 is, is too high. I don't want to see an increase in the secondary, how many secondary self hauler permits do we sell? Secondary self hauler permits?
I'd have to look it up.
Okay, I don't know if that's a big, you know, I guess I'd want to know how it breaks out. I, I agree, we don't increase the senior rate, and I, I'm not supportive of increasing the no permit self hauler fee because I want to encourage people to drop their garbage off at the recycling center.
See, this, this was a joint effort with Tom. Tom ran all the numbers. He did all the residential stuff. I did the commercial stuff. I sent you all the paper and all my numbers were in green.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely.
So all the residential stuff.
Yeah, and I still, I still think it's, would be the right decision to move them there.
He's the one that did the numbers.
Yeah, and I, and I maintain, I think that like, truthfully, this is, pitches into much of what we touch as government, and I think the treatment of waste is something we've potentially kind of neglected a, a little bit, and that's not to criticize the operations, it's more on us as residents of this town. Like what we're throwing away has a cost, and I think often when you get rid of stuff, you assume it has no value, but it, it costs the town money, it costs you as a taxpayer money to process that. What these are is really trying to marry that cost, you know, with, with, you know, what it should be paid. It, effectively, there could be some degree of subsidization going to 125. I mean, Steve, you'll be, what does it cost for a self, sorry, for, sorry, Steve, what does it cost to have your garbage picked up currently in today's market?
Have your garbage picked up?
Yeah.
I think I pay like $65 a week.
Right.
Yeah, I get my garbage picked up.
You get a good deal.
You get a good deal.
I'm a longtime customer and they, it never, it's only been increased, well, it's been increased twice. When I started, it was $50, and now it's 65.
That's not bad.
We only have one can a week.
Yeah, that's the other thing too, it goes by the can as well.
Right. So I mean, two weeks is equivalent to a year's permit.
That's a choice, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But it's cost-wise, I mean, I think when you, you look at what businesses are charging, you know, yes, they're operating a profit, but it's, it's, you know, we additionally have kind of a role as government to ensure that we are, you know, subsidized where we can for what we want to do certainly, but we also need, you know, the departments to some degree charge, you know, what is the true cost. But that, that's a choice we make.
First, I think we've now target with this discussion, personally with this discussion now, I think we target the C and D and, and right now.
I mean, that's 25% right there, C and D.
And that's, that's where.
Commercial and the compost, that's where we make our money.
And if, and if we.
That's where we bring in our money. That's, my biggest concern is the commercial and the compost facility.
And that's, and that's where, where the town has been forced right now. I mean, I'll use the word forced based on our inability to dispose of C and D within our confines of our township. We're now forced based on the closure of Brookhaven and the company's taking it off island right now to increase those, those charges on there then too.
Absolutely, because Brookhaven's already closed down C and D, right? At the end of 2024, Brookhaven landfill already closed to C and D at the end of 2024. So the burden is, I, I agree with what you're saying, is much more on us and it's 25%.
I, I know they, Winter Brothers, they recycle where that stuff gets dumped, and there's a lot of people there and they go through it and they separate it.
Yeah, there's some kind of construction debris place now up in Islip where people can go and get windows and stuff like that, but that's.
Maybe.
You know, that's, that's, I don't know where that can happen here. I'm sure it's a huge warehouse.
Brookhaven used to use it for a cap, and, you know, they grind it up and use it for cap on the landfill, but that's done and that's going to be closed next year.
Yeah.
So just to get.
That's why we had such a big increase in there when we did the bid for this year for garbage, for hauling it out.
Just to get from this perspective, would you all be comfortable with 125 on the primary self hauler permit?
I would be because that's how I want, envisioned that they go as of last year in the budgeting on there. You know, incrementally, smaller percentages than the larger percentage. So to my personal opinion, yes, because that's how I was at last year.
Want to see, but.
I could go with 125.
Kate, no?
No, I'd like to see where it is for another year.
And Ian?
I'm okay at 125. And then on the secondary self hauler permit, we was 45, we're recommending 55. Would you be comfortable with 50, a $5 increase there again?
Personally, I would keep everything, the only thing I would increase was the primary self hauler, that, that $5 increment, because that's just being consistent to what I had been in budgeting for last year.
I'm in agreement with David on that. I don't want to see the other fees increased.
Okay, and Ian say?
Yeah, I don't have a strong opinion, but my vote wouldn't matter at that point.
Yeah, all right, thank you guys.
Your vote always matters.
You are good?
Yep, I think so.
Thank you, Steve. And thank you, staff, also, Steve. I said, thank your staff, Craig, Craig Fick and your staff and, and everyone in the office. We'll get a memo out to everyone in the office here in the clerks offices because they are the front line to the resident interaction, so we'll make sure we'll get the questions and answers to any of the questions that the residents might have on this then too. But thank your staff for down there because they, they do do a heck of a job down there in the rain, the cold, all, all the days. They do a lot, a lot of work down there then too, so on behalf of myself and the town board, obviously.
And I just want to iterate something with the staff at the sites, like too often, staff at the sanitation sites get abuse from members of the public who don't wish to pay, if they don't have a sticker, et cetera.
They're not nice to those.
No, and this, this has to end, whether it's that we look to install license plate readers at the sanitation department to follow up if there is an incident like that. You know, we, we will call code enforcement or PD in those instances, but, you know, you, you have to understand that when we set these rules, these fees, you know, it's to operate the town. And, you know, if you choose to confront a member of staff there in a verbally abusive manner, the town will follow up with you.
And just because the litter.
Smile, come with kindness, that's all.
Yeah, a little kindness would be good. And just because the litter action committee would toss me out the window if I didn't remind everybody that you knew town code is that you must cover and secure your load that you're bringing to the recycling center.
Say happy new year to you all.
Thank you, Steve. Be well.
Thank you.
Well. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the Community Housing Fund project awards. After hearing discussion, we had five public hearings on December 19th. Eric, you, thank you for pulling up the PowerPoint, and maybe what we'll do is we'll, you give us an overview and then we'll introduce them one at a time and have a conversation.
No problem. So as the board knows, five public hearings were held on December 19th, one for each of the five individual requests for the Community Housing Fund funding that were able to proceed to that point. Yeah, what I'll do is I'll go through a presentation, give a background on each request, and then the board can deliberate because this is the post-hearing discussion. And also, I should have said right at the top, I apologize for being late. I know this was the first.
Oh, no, 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 we intentionally.
Oh, oh, you did, okay, I walked in late, so, sorry.
Look, you added yourself.
Me, because I was a little late.
You added yourself and you didn't have.
Don't worry, don't worry, he's on my end. Okay, let me just share the screen here. Directly. Okay. Beginning of this. So this is an overview of all the requests that were received. At the end, I will put this up for the board, but as we just said, we'll, we'll go through each one by one. So the first was the Route 114 middle income housing application. The housing authority is proposing to construct up to 50 new rental apartments with a mix of one, two, and three bedroom units, targeting middle income households. The town of East Hampton transferred two parcels of land, as you can see on that aerial, on Route 114 in Wayne Scott, to the housing authority to construct the development. Often the utilization of outside funding, federal, state, and county, requires that the tenant income be capped at significantly less than what is the town standard, which is 130% of area median income. The plan for this project was to have all housing units be for tenants at an income of up to 130% AMI, and the housing authority is requesting CHF money to effectuate this. A minimum 75% of units will be reserved at 130% AMI. If alternate funding sources require inclusion of tenants at lower income levels, the housing authority is requesting funding to make the, the project entirely meet that standard.
Okay, do we want to go down the line and?
I'm supportive of this project, yeah.
David?
I think this is the, the next large, well, Steve's not here, I was still talking to him, Mike. This is the next large project in the All Hands on Housing initiative that the town board has set forward right now then too. These parcels were collected, targeted, collected for this project then too. I think this is specifically one of the things I stood on when we were pushing, trying to get the referendum moved, moved ahead. So I look forward to seeing this project, and I think this is appropriate.
Okay. I, I'm fully supportive, I have nothing to add to my, my colleague's, David's comments. This is a good investment for our community.
Ian?
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. I think that this project really gets at a, you know, a category that's hard to fund otherwise, and so I'm grateful to have the Community Housing Fund available, and I think this is a wonderful project that I'm happy to support.
And I support it as well. I'm the liaison to East Hampton Housing Authority, and as part of the initiative back in 2023 when we did All Hands on Housing, this was actually my project, Route 114. We also put the affordable housing overlay designation, zoning designation over those properties and the cottages property. And, you know, the, the housing authority, I think now manages with the five, five developments now with the, the green at Gardner's Point, and I, only one of those developments is for middle income, the, the property on Springs Fireplace Road, and I believe there's only 32 units, no, 26 units, 13 and 13, 13 one-bedroom, 13 two-bedroom, 26 units, and we know we need more middle income affordable housing. So I think this is a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, moving on to the next funding request, which was Whalebone Apartments renovation. Whalebone has operated this 46-unit affordable rental complex since 1989 and currently has a waiting list of over 300 applicants. Upgrades to the living units and site improvements are proposed based on a needs assessment prepared by Whalebone. The proposed project includes replacing fossil fuel burning equipment with electric units, adding solar panels, and upgrading kitchens, bathrooms, and flooring in the units where this has not already taken in place for a total project cost of 4.1 million. However, they are seeking 340, 345,000 from the Community Housing Fund to partially cover an estimated 750,000 in soft costs that would be incurred over the next year.
Tom?
Yeah, so I mean, look, CHF's goal is not just to build new housing, it's also to maintain our existing housing stock, and I think, you know, this to some degree falls into that. However, you know, I, I do feel like there's some stretch here with the solar panels, et cetera, you know, and. panels, et cetera, you know, and just to me, this is not quite the project I would like to see the CHF money being spent on. So I'm not supportive of this one in particular.
David?
So the general obligation law for, allows for rehabilitation of these projects for affordable housing, the, the, the solar initiative here works within the town's initiative on a large scale, multiple, multiple unit location on there then too. One of the knocks sometimes when you hear about affordable housing is that it gets older and aged. And I think it's appropriate to keep updating our facilities because affordable housing is here to stay for the rest of our lives and generations. Let's not let the facilities deteriorate. Let's upkeep them. And now that's what the one that allows is this source. So I, I feel differently, but I, but I think this is a good project to move ahead.
Kate, I support this project. I think the definitive statement in this project is one, it's been operating since 1989. I don't know how many of us has not invested more upgrades or have to because of deteriorating conditions in our own homes, and we're fortunate enough to be able to do so. Also, when I look and see a waiting list of over 300 applicants, I think this is a very good investment in our year round working community. I think it's worth it. Also, I understand Tom's concerns, but our electrical, replacing fuel burning equipment is a also win for our, our battle against climate impacts. Also, we have a, we're, we're going to look at, we worked on an energy roadmap that includes increasing solar opportunities. And we also have a climate emergency declaration that says all of our principles, planning, and building and zoning codes should take the climate emergency into consideration. So for me, we're just adhering to the town policies we've already set. So I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. I think that this, you know, as Tom pointed out, that, that part of, you know, appropriate use of the funds are to make sure that our existing affordable units remain livable, you know, and in good shape. So I fully support this application. And that's it.
I support it as well. The only thing I want to add is that this development is 36 years old. So as Kate pointed out, you know, we all have to make, you know, changes and updates to our home as things go on, go, you know, 20 years, you start needing to replace roofs and hot water and HVAC and whatnot. Also, I think, you know, some of the upgrades, I believe, may be interior as well. And I think that people deserve to live with dignity. And I think, I can't imagine operating in a 36 year old kitchen. So I'm supportive of granting them the $345,000.
As Madam Supervisor, I believe also the, the town has also granted them funds for upgrading of their septic system for this facility also as part of our initiatives for our environment too. So again, the Whalebone Group is actually working really well to make sure they upgrade their infrastructure facility for the next maybe 36 years. I remember when this place was built.
All right.
Okay, moving to the next project, the Green at Gardner's Point. The housing authority with Georgia Green Ventures has built 50 one, two, and three bedroom rental apartments on a portion of this 14 acre site. The 35.4 million dollar project is largely complete. Perspective tenants have been selected and as of today have been placed into units. Georgia Green Ventures secured more than 23.9 million in capital from public and private sources for the project, including federal, state, and Suffolk County funding, along with a mortgage, but is requesting $1 million from the housing fund to cover a funding gap due to a significant rise in the interest rates since the start of the project. The need for additional funds exceeds the amount of contingency that was allowed to be included in the New York State approved project budget.
Thank you, Eric.
So yeah, initially, when this kind of came across, I was not supportive of this, you know, with kind of just the initial kind of understanding of it. I actually since then have had time to meet with the housing authority and Georgia Green Ventures just to kind of understand what the model is that's actually used and where they have control and where they don't to kind of plan for contingencies such as interest rates increases. So, you know, I, I think having that understanding and just kind of really seeing this project come to fruition, I'm actually going to change and I do support this funding going towards the Green at Gardner's Point. I think it's a phenomenal project and, you know, I think this is the benchmark of honestly where affordable housing can be across the state. It's great.
I think the partnership here is one of the things that stands out here and it's the partnership with the housing authority and partnership with Georgia Green Ventures on there then too. They have provided services to the town of East Hampton unlike any partnership that the town of East Hampton has ever had that I'm aware of. I look forward to more, more of that. The project itself is a spectacular location on there then too, in which town of East Hampton actually only had to do one option on this and this was for some of the zoning on there then too. I do believe that this project is fundable based on the general obligation law, unlike maybe other opinions that might be out there. But I do believe it with, in speaking with our attorneys, that yes, that is correct. My issue is about the process here. And the process specifically is how we've seen it in other projects as far as like CPF, seeing a project from the start to the end. And when projects get completed and come out, come out and needing additional requests at the end, if it's a water quality project, the town actually, towns reviewing, advisory reviewing committees have seen it from the beginning. So that's where I'm, I'm on the fence leaning to the side where I wouldn't support this only for that. Not saying I wouldn't support this project in the future or more in the future, but it's just this one at this time then to be, not necessarily set that precedent at this point.
Kate?
Yes, I can understand both sides. Certainly process is important. However, I think there is a bit of uniqueness to this particular project in, in the way that the gap happened through no fault of the, of the folks building it. And again, supporting folks to be able to live and work here who can't afford to live here helps us with our businesses, our town staff, et cetera, across the board. So I agree with Tom and support this, this expenditure as an investment in our community.
Yeah, I support this as well. You know, I went through a very similar process to Tom and had the same types of questions that Dave had. It's a, it's a different request. The fact that the project is, is mostly completed. But as Tom pointed out, there's only, there's only so much in the control of applicants to account for contingencies and interest rate rises. And so I understand the financial position, you know, everybody is in here. And I think that just echo other comments, this is a fantastic project. I think the East Hampton Housing Authority and Georgia Green Ventures should be very proud. And, you know, for the town of East Hampton, I'm grateful that you're doing this kind of work here and I hope there's more to come. So I'm fully supportive. The only thing I would say, I mentioned this at the last conversation, we have had the question about whether this is eligible. I believe that it is. I've heard that opinion from our, our attorney's office, but I would just like that formally before we, you know, issue the resolution, just to make sure that we're covered there.
Okay, thank you, Ian. So I support the funding, a million dollars to the Green at Gardner's Point. When this project first came, the town board put the affordable housing overlay district over that property. We granted the East Hampton Housing Authority $25,000. That's the skin we had in the game. And I feel now contributing a million dollars. So we'll be in for a million, $25,000. That's 3% of the cost of the project. And we just developed, we have 100 bedrooms, from what I understand, that for folks in our local community. And it's actually hits close to home because one of our town staff that we interact with, one of our colleagues, her and her daughter got a two bedroom. And to say that she is over the moon and is ecstatic with how big the closets are is an understatement.
They are beautiful, beautiful.
They're beautiful. And, and, you know, that was a point that was made at the public hearing that, you know, again, Kate mentioned, you know, with interest rates due to COVID, they didn't cut corners. They didn't change, you know, the siding on the, on the buildings. They didn't change the countertops, the kitchens, the stainless steel appliances. And that's credit to Georgia Green Ventures and East Hampton Housing Authority and their partners. So the other point that was made at the public hearing is that East Hampton Housing Authority has a 25% interest in the project. That means they will receive $650,000 in developer fees, and that is going to go into the next project or two or three. And, you know, we need more affordable housing. That's, you know, our number one priority, our All Hands on Housing initiative. And I couldn't think of a better project to support.
Okay, Eric, the next one.
The next project is the cottages. The housing authority has been managing a nine unit facility known as the cottages and now wishes to purchase the site from the Sag Harbor Community Housing Trust and continue its rehab of the units, preserving them as affordable in perpetuity for a total project cost of 1.3 million. After acquisition, the housing authority plans to make significant site improvements such as connecting to public water, upgrading electrical service to provide for all electric efficiency, and tying into the sewage treatment plant, plan for the neighboring 114 middle income housing project. The housing authority is seeking a $500,000 grant from the Community Housing Fund.
Okay, Tom?
So Eric, just a quick question on this. Do these properties, just to clarify, they are in East Hampton Town but in Sag Harbor, correct?
They are not. They're, they're, the cottages, they're very close to the municipal boundary line of the Village of Sag Harbor, but they're not within it.
They're not within the Sag, okay. So we're saying, okay.
They're in the town of East Hampton and they're in the Wayne Scott School District.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, no, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm supportive of this on the whole. I think, you know, the fact is we'll be tying in aspects to the 114 project as well. You know, I had had reservations about this previously, but I do think this is a good grant.
For decades, this has been a location that's defacto affordability housing, not necessarily affordable housing by, by the law. I also like the way that some designs aren't larger buildings with multiple units. Some people will want to have four walls, not sharing a wall, small little communities like this then too. So I think this type of pocket type of development is something that I would like to see more of in certain locations with individual apartment buildings. I think that's a way to move forward. And again, this comes to what this, what this project was, I think maybe a little of a confusion there was, it was for a larger project of the Bolivale Watchcase Facility, Watchcase Building, the developer had to put in affordable housing, but there was a provision in their code that they could actually purchase a piece of property for affordable housing with the same amount of money. And this is what was purchased, very similar to nine, I think five Noel Lane that happened in Wayne Scott on a different property also. I'm babbling a little bit, but overall it's very similar to what, to what we just granted as far as the project at, at Windmill, Whalebone, sorry, is we have to update these facilities into modern times to get the families in there. Announce some money right now, we'll pave a pound 10 years, 20 years down the line. So yes, I approve it. I support it. I'll prove it later.
On the 16th, you'll approve it.
So again, I'm supportive of this project. I just want to also point out that I think we have to reiterate this, the East Hampton Town Housing Authority is a partner, not a department of the town. And to be able to have a already built nine unit facility come up to be able to purchase without having, starting from, you know, zero, is an opportunity, a real estate opportunity I don't think anybody could pass up. And the upgrades are all essential. And it's, you know, a $500,000 grant is a good, good bargain for us as well.
Yeah, I fully support this project as well. You know, it's an interesting development and not one that we would construct today from scratch. I've spoken with the housing authority about it and I think they analyzed the, you know, whether it was appropriate to rehab these as they are or, you know, a newer development. And I think that it made sense from a cost standpoint to do this. And I also just want to say, I think a lot of thought went into that decision in that they're trying to, to keep the tenants there. And so by refurbishing the units as they are and the configuration, I think sort of, as Dave points out, makes it a more unique development with Sag's character, but also allows people to stay in their homes without too much upheaval. So I think keeping these units that currently exist in good condition is super important and I fully support it.
I support it as well. And if you look at it, there are nine units, they're looking for a $500,000 grant. That's spending approximately $55,000 a unit to rehab each one.
That's pretty good.
One unit of affordable housing is, the math we use is half a million dollars. So I'm supportive of this project. Again, I had said that I'm the liaison to the housing authority, so I sit in on the meetings and they've taken over management of this project from the Sag Harbor Community Housing Trust. They've been great partners too, because they're giving them a deal on the, the purchase of the property. And, you know, being able to sit at that table, you know, once a month at the housing authority meetings and to see the professionalism and the, the heart and how, and I mean, they've just added a new project, they've been managing the cottages and, you know, it's just a privilege to be the liaison. Thank you, Katie.
Okay, so.
Project?
We have, is this the last one, Eric?
And this is the Windmill One Expansion. Windmill Housing, the owner and developer of the 40 unit Windmill One Affordable Rental Complex for senior citizens, which was built in 1987, wishes to add 20 new approximately 600 square foot units to the Windmill One site for a total cost of 6.3 million. Windmill is seeking $338,000, $1,000 in the form of a loan from the housing fund to cover soft costs expected to be incurred over the next year for planning and development, including architectural and engineering plans, legal fees, surveys, and the like. The loan will be paid back upon full project financing.
Thank you, Eric. Tom?
I'm fully supportive of this project.
Yeah. So my affordable housing is different shapes, sizes, and ages, and locations. So yes, I am on this one. Supportive.
Kate?
Yes, I'm fully supportive of this. Again, we're, we have a 40 unit rental complex for senior citizens since 1987 and adding 20 new approximately 600 square foot units is, is a very valuable investment.
Yeah, I fully support this as well. You know, this board earlier this year allowed senior housing to go up to 12 units of density per acre. By, we recognized, A, that the environmental and traffic impacts would not be significant by doing that, and also that we just have a great need for senior housing in this town. Tom and I visited the site earlier in the year and met with current residents and prospective residents. And it was, it was really heartwarming to see how much the current residents appreciated being able to live there and how open they were to welcoming new residents. And at the same time, we saw a lot of people on the waitlist who, you know, were worried about finding a place. So with all of that said, I really support the project and them doing the planning to try to fit 20 more units on site. And I hope they get through the planning process with success and I'm happy to support the project.
Thank you, Ian. I concur with my colleagues and I'm supportive of the process of giving a grant of $338,000 for the Windmill One Expansion. So, so that looks like taking a straw boat that, you know, all five of the public hearings that we held, that there is majority support for each of those funding opportunities. So I guess we had talked about this. If that was the case, we were looking at January 16th, our town board meeting to have these resolutions on. So.
Shouldn't be a problem.
If you could work with John, Jill, Nikki, Eric to draft those resolutions, that would be great.
Will do.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, we have, as we did last year, we were bringing our town board liaison. It's a spreadsheet that we create that spells out for, for the community and for internal purposes, what each of us are responsible for, what departments we, you know, liaison with, what our key projects and initiatives are. And I, you know, I have the privilege and the opportunity at the organizational meeting to give the state of the town address and talk about what our administration's priorities are. But I thought it would be, it behooves us to, that board members also have an ability to talk about some of the key projects and initiatives that they're looking forward to working on this calendar year. So you want to?
Yeah, sure. We didn't do this last year, of course, but just a quick question for you honest. Do you want us to combine liaison reports into this or do you want to do liaison reports separately?
We'll do it separately.
Okay, all right. So I'm against it. Assistant Advisory is, is the first of my liaisons. You know, real goals that this committee is looking to get worked on next year include the reopening of the Cranberry Hall Bridge Road, the Hamlet Lighting Projects, both on Main Street and the municipal parking lot. You know, hot topics that really, you know, they'd like us to look, do more to address include traffic, noise, special events, roads, the Human Services Center and Center for Modern Aging, and the protection of the Stony Hill Aging, and the protection of the Stony Hill Aquifer, along with the growing beech tree disease. That's kind of what's on top of their radar. Again, apologies, are we going to do department liaison reports here too, or do you want to just do external?
Well, I think it's just, it's an opportunity to just talk about some of like your key projects and initiatives that you're.
Sure, okay, so, yeah, okay. So IT, the real goal for IT this year is the rollout of the Open Gov program, Public Facing. Right now, we are estimating we're about 70% completed for that project. We're in the testing phase. This is something that we think is going to streamline immensely application processes across the board. The challenge right now is getting the testing done of all the new pieces we're rolling out. It's additional workload on all the departments, so, you know, I would really like to work with my partners here, to liaise to their departments, that this has to be a number one or number two priority for each department, you know, if we're going to get Open Gov rolled out in the first half of this year. Human Services continues to do just such a massive amount, I can't thank that enough. I actually would like to do a work session at some point in this first quarter, just highlighting the array of services they offer, go through the numbers, because obviously there seems to be some misunderstanding in the community about what services they offer and the volume that they actually cover, so I think that would be very helpful to the public.
And I think also, it might be helpful to have Diane Patrizio, our Human Services Director, go to each of the individual CACs and make the presentation of, I did that years ago when I was liaison to Springs CAC, and folks weren't aware of the breadth of the services that we provide.
It's a huge undertaking that they have there, and, and growing needs too, across the board. Fire Marshal has really done a huge job this year. You know, we've increased our inspections to 1,600, you know, over the goal of 1,200 for last year. You know, with that full staffing, they've really managed to increase liaisons with the town PD, code enforcement. They've also worked, and will be working this year, to really kind of improve and identify ADA disability access deficiencies on submitted plans. And the other big project coming in there as well is that we want to introduce some legislation with regards to solar panels and battery storage, just to ensure safety for both homeowners and firefighters who have to tackle instances related to those. The trustees continue to maintain their regular programs, the season-long mosquito count in Akabonic Meadows, as well as the horseshoe crab counts. Both saw excellent results last year. They continue to do dock inventory, you know, which has resulted in a complete ban on all new docks in trustee waters and new rules addressing the maintenance of existing dock structures. You know, so they are allowing for non-permanent structures to come to compliance, so that's a big goal. And the other continued goal for them is, you know, the Boat Pump Out Program was very successful last year with thousands of gallons of waste properly disposed of, helping the harbor water quality. That's looking to continue this year. Sanitation, we kind of touched on this a little bit, the key goal here really has to be to recycle more. You know, that's, that's for us as, as community members. You know, we did talk about some of the upgrades we're doing at the site. We obviously have the new lean-to over the construction debris area, which will be in construction this year, which, completed this year, which will be great. We are also going to be bringing to the board a review of plans to update the site as a whole. Many of the buildings there are in a state of significant disrepair. We've got some projects going on currently to address those, but, you know, a larger look at the site plan as a whole and how to address that is key. The other thing that we will be doing in the first quarter this year is the installation of radiation detectors. We've put out for capital project for that, that is to both protect our town workers, but also to save residents' money on, you know, refuse getting returned from Suffolk County because there is radiating material in there. The other key goal for this department is, you know, we've really looked to fill the open positions there. We understand from the public that it doesn't always look exactly as you'd like. You know, we need to invest in people to have the resources to change that. Moving on to ADU implementation for all hands-on housing. So the primary goals for the ADU Committee this year are to finalize details of providing residents with access to CHF funds. We'd like to do a work session either this month or next to review some of the prior questions that were raised regarding to ADU code, specifically LLCs, parking, et cetera. You know, ideally, I would like to get the recommendations, as approved by the board, codified into the, you know, first or second quarter of this year. Digitization, this is one I started off hot with last year, and the more we kind of dug into this, you know, I think we have to have a rethink of our strategy here. There is obviously a critical need for us to continue to digitize our historic records, but we've seen two key challenges. You know, the first is there's not been consistent kind of coding of records in order for them to be accessed correctly. So we're recommending from IT to have a refresher training, you know, session for people that we are going to go forward with this, to make sure stuff does get coded correctly. The second is, is actually the compatibility of some of the records with scanning, certainly in some departments, when you're looking at maps and things like that. There's concern that, you know, those organizations doing the digitization just do not have the expertise of the record knowledge to ensure the correct information's being scanned. So that's something we're going to have to resolve at some point, but there's a lot of work to be done in digitization for next year. Pecanic Esch, you're going to leave, Kate, I think you're the liaison for that now, so I mean, maybe we can discuss it offline. Brooks Park, you know, 2024, we did review a draft license with them. You know, we, we, goals to move this forward in 2025. Currently, you know, it's, public can visit the site, it's pretty sealed off. The studio is behind corrugated fencing, and it's very close to honestly falling down. The residential structure is uninhabited and does continue to see break-ins by vandals. It's something we as a town need to deal with this year, truthfully. We have the property management plan. CPF laws have changed that potentially do allow us to use funding from CPF to address some of the building needs here, but this is something I'd like to bring to fruition in 2025. I think one of the next steps I'd like to do with this is potentially, Ian, work with you to do a presentation to the Springs CAC, because I think getting them on board with this is key. If it doesn't have that support, I have, you know, we're going to have to look how to move this forward accordingly.
Happy to do that.
Thank you. Sorry, I want to make sure I'm not falling out of order here. Sorry, I did. Okay. Okay, museum, Marine Museum. So great reports from here. We actually had an all-time high for student groups from East Hampton Town during the months of November, December, saw 500 students each month. Some key programs that have been implemented and will be going next year. The first is marine science conservation, the Bay scallop, and I'm going to pronounce this wrong, the Argopectin eredians, bivalve long species on Long Island they're studying. Students are kind of looking at their history of scallops, studying the species through wet labs, field trips, and scientific illustrations, et cetera. They're also doing work with students on marine biodiversity, assembling saltwater habitats, designing eelgrass beds, working with local scientists at Pecanic Bee Caper to kind of educate on water quality and impacts of storm runoff. You know, we do have goals with the Marine Museum to start some renovation projects this year. They are numerous, that, you know, we've kind of ranked them with the Parks and Buildings Department. The first one we'd like to get addressed is the basement, and then kind of move up from there. Licensing Review Board, you know, not a lot of people in the town know about this organization, but, you know, this base, this group meets, board meets to review aspects of town licensing. One particular example is for contractors, you know, as licensed by code in the town under Code 156.5. You know, it's basically there to protect the public. If you have concerns that contractors or other operations are operating without a license, you can contact the town clerk's office to verify the presence of a license, and if you're fully aware of someone operating without a license, you can contact ordinance enforcement to follow up as well. The number for that is 631-324-3858. It's there to protect you. Fort Hill Cemetery, goals for this year, continue repairs, and we look to start the process for the construction of a new memorial wall up there as well. East End Fire Commissioners, we will be working with them with the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. We're looking to actually have visits from the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator to each of the fire departments to update on town policies and look to coordinate some crossover training events. Special events and film, we completed our review largely of 2024, and we will look to do a work session in the next few weeks, really to kind of make suggestions on changes for fees for that as well. Disability advisories aboard, you know, the key goals for this year are to grow the universal design concept across town developments. You know, even talking with the lead developer of Georgia Designs earlier about this, it's something that contractors are more aware of. There's this, some misunderstanding of what that process is, and again, I think that would be something that it would be great to do a work session on, just to ensure people really understand what universal design means. Other goals for this board are to see the refurbishment of some town playgrounds, you know, looking to identify which playgrounds have which accessibility for people with different disabilities. East Hampton Youth Task Force, some really good news going on here. One of the most successful projects that's been introduced by the town in the last few decades has been the Itry program, which has helped young women just grow in mental strength and personal skill sets. You know, the, the Youth Task Force kind of identified that there's, there's a need out there for young men of a young age as well. So there'll be a pilot program launching this year, led by Josh Odom from Montork, along with the founders of Itry and some members of Paddles Humanity, to, to launch a similar program for young men in the fifth and sixth grade. Just additionally, from a youth perspective and crossing back over to business, there is an opportunity for businesses to get involved with the high school, looking for people from local businesses to work with 11th graders for mock interviews, et cetera. There's a, the mock interview event is on February 11th. There's a career fair on March 25th as well, if any businesses wish to be involved with that, and you can contact Peter Fletcher at East Hampton School for that. Anti-bias Task Force, the key goal here is really to improve our communication with Hispanic and Latino, Spanish-speaking populations. You know, looking through statistics from the school and others, you know, a strong estimate is around 40% of the populace here is of Latino origin, and there's just, we're reviewing right now with the Anti-Bias Task Force what critical documents the town produces, both on the town website and just generally, should potentially be translated. We will be looking to do a work session with that presentation in the first quarter of this year. Business Committee, we talked about the interaction with the high school as well. You know, just giving a, I reached out to them to kind of get a sense of what the business environment was for last year and what the goal is for next year. Most of that's going to come in my next liaison report, but from a real estate perspective, we did get some good feedback, which is that, you know, last year, overall across the Hamptons, you know, from a volume perspective, sales were down about 8% in the number of houses that sold. Where we did see increases was really at the top end of the, the market, in price points, you know, above 5 million. Elsewhere, there was larger decline. That did vary somewhat across different hamlets. Montork actually saw an increase in home sales of 8% for last year. Amagansett also saw an increase. It was really in the East Hampton area where there was a decrease. But, you know, other interesting things that are coming back from there, median home sale prices for last year, you know, talking about affordability, you know, for, for last year, the medium sale home price was, for Montork was 2.1 million, over 1.725 million from the year prior. Amagansett, it's gone up from 3 million to 4.3 million, medium sale home price. East Hampton area has gone up from 1.68 million to 1.85 million. So, you know, we continue to see housing prices increase, which is, you know, speaks to that challenge of providing affordable housing, which, you know, truthfully, from all the businesses we talk to, you know, staffing is the largest issue they have, and housing relates to that. That is everything from my liaison report. Now, having done that before, I hope that's roughly in the realm of what we're looking for, so.
We did it last year, it was on last year's agenda. David?
Yes, I want to thank the supervisor and then also other board members. Primarily, most of my, my liaisons are staying the same this year. I, I, I hope that I've showed that I've been a liaison to these departments and organizations that there is an open door to, to the town board at any time, and I think that goes across all of our, all of our board members and supervisor. I will continue on this year, being the liaison rep to the hamlet of Montork, including the Montork CAC. I look forward to continuing those discussions out there. The departments that I'll continue to be working with would be for the Buildings and Grounds and Parks Department and Recreation. These two departments work hand-in-hand with each other, specifically trying to maintain our town, town facilities, our town parks, our town buildings, recreate, putting on great recreational programs with our superintendent of Recreation, John Rooney. And also, don't forget, underneath of town's Recreation Department is the town's lifecards. The town's lifecards are the backbone to some of our water safety for the summertime then too. I'm also the liaison to the town's Highway Department, working with the superintendent of Highway, Steve Lynch, and their staff to maintain over 300 miles of roadways within the town of East Hampton. I also completely enjoy working with John Barley Dunn and his team at the town's aquaculture department, currently looking to move forward with producing millions of oysters and clams every year, multiple millions, and hundreds of thousands of scallops, trying to figure out what we need to do with our scallops, scallops with the new ever-present bacteria in the waters, working with Pecanic Esch, where he program on that, and also continue to press ahead, press ahead with the need for our new state-of-the-art aquaculture facility. Land Acquisition and Management, working with our land stewards and Scott Wilson with acquiring lands, managing our trails. That department is, is small in, in numbers, but very impactful in, in nature, the way that they prepare, the way that they are stewards to our trails, our lands, and also taking on greater development growth, sorry, as far as continued education courses. And we've done that, not just in highway, allowing for CDLs, we're doing that also with our land management, with our land stewards becoming arborists, certified arborists, and we're seeing that in many of our other departments then too. So we'll continue with that. Cantwell Court, I haven't driven by it today, but I'm hoping the Water Authority might be there today or tomorrow to install the pipeline. So once that gets into those utilities, we will be placing individuals in there by the end of the calendar year then too, in those locations. Key projects and initiatives that I worked on or working on, I think you will see the Montork Playhouse, not just a ribbon cutting, but a door opening for that, hopefully by early summer, midsummer this year at the Playhouse. I toured that facility actually on Friday, and the facility is, is moving ahead quite well. I'll go more into my liaison report.
Second pool in?
Yes. Yeah, bring me to the punch. Thanks, Kathy.
Sorry.
Second pool is in, and it's still got some rebar, but I think they're going to pour concrete potentially early next week on it then too. As we mentioned, Stephen Hands Path Multi-Use User Facility, Use Facility over there, that is, that, once that is installed, we're going to see that facility be just a star and a jewel of recreational sports, not just in the town of East Hampton, but pretty much on Long Island. I don't, there's not many that are going to be able to match that. Stephen Hands Path Roundabout, we're moving ahead forward with that, also with the Second House, sorry, Second House Road, Industrial Road Intersections, we're working with engineers and also with Steve Lynch with that. We are probably weeks away, I also toured the Second House restoration, we're probably weeks away from that, that project being complete. It's looking spectacular on the side. I thank James Pincott for his assistance with that, with Bob Hefner, Drew Bennett, the contractor, and Montork Historical Society on that also then too. It is, it is, is a joy to see how that is almost completed right now. I would like to talk with the town board about the future use of the former Child Development Center of the Hamptons building. That building has been, not restored, but been maintained since we used it as a COVID vaccination facility, and I think it's ready for its new chapter in life. What that chapter is, I'm not exactly sure, but we are prepared right now to have that discussion. It'd be nice to have that discussion sooner than later, so they could potentially have a new licensee for a community use facility in there, potentially by summertime. James Pincott's been working with Buildings and Grounds. It is vacant as a shell, it's ready to be, it's ready to go on to its next chapter in helping East Hampton, and it's East Hampton's residents, so I continue with that. That goes into also our security systems upgrades, not just at our town hall facility, but also at our restroom facilities with our camera systems and such. We'll continue moving forward with that. I am also working on multiple Army Corps projects right now, one being, one being the Fire Island, the Montork Point Project, which is the Fire Island, the Montauk Point Project, which is actually, hasn't been fully closed out yet. I'm continuing to press on that. And then also the Lake Montauk Drudging Project, which we'll touch on shortly. Cemetery Restoration goes into our artful preservation of our, preservation of our cemeteries, other buildings that we have. What I would like to do is take a longer look at this. We have many Patriot Stones in our historical cemeteries right now, and next year will be the 250th anniversary of the United States of America. I think it might be good to try to target the restoration of some of these Patriot Stones in advance of that. And then we also have some other monuments around town that are put in 1976, the year I was born, that we would actually be able to work on that this calendar year to have them ready for next year. Next year, 2026, I have that. Leads me into the boards, I'll continue on with the CPF Advisory Committee, the Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee, which round one is open, in Oak Grove and Atlantic Cemetery. Let's see here, Citizens Committees, I continue to do the great, look for the great work of the Nation Preserve Committee, we're looking, working on more management plans right now and stewardship. The Fisheries Committee, our town's Fisheries Committee, which are always under stress and working together with the county and some other initiatives there. That leads me into our SLIPS Committee, which is our Harbors and Docks Committees, I'll continue to be the liaison to that. I have some more information in our liaison report. And then lastly, our internal committees, working with our Beach Advisory Group, preparing our beaches for summer season 2025, and also our East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue Squad. So I thank you to the board members. Anyone has any questions or concerns about any of those initiatives or committees, please contact my office anytime, it's 631-324-3187. Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Kate?
Yes, thank you. So my, the hamlet that I'm the liaison to is Wayne Scott. I'll report in our liaison report section on their first meeting of 2025 with a new chair. So there's much to report on that, that goes on to that group who give up their Saturday mornings once a month to discuss, as they call it, all things Wayne Scott. They're all, and of course, they're focused on traffic calming or traffic safety, the gun club, the airport, and just general Wayne Scott matters. And of course, they're thrilled on the large preservation project, 66 Wayne Scott Main. They look forward to that moving forward and a management plan being developed, et cetera, as a keystone in preservation of both history, water quality, et cetera. To talk about the Planning Department, Natural Resources and Building Departments, every project that we've talked about so far and will talk about in the future are aided by those departments. So besides their workload to the community, which is phenomenal, they also assist us with sequodeterminations, planning, site plan reviews for our projects, et cetera. So I think it probably would be a good idea to have each of those, certainly Planning and Natural Resources, I know Joe comes in front of us, to give a kind of a overview of what, what all tasks those two particular departments handle, from flagging wetlands to working on all of our water quality projects, living shoreline projects, to securing grants, to energy sustainability. Both of those departments are pretty much nonstop and work with staffing issues that we have, fulfilling those departments. Code Enforcement is another department that's nonstop, and Animal Control, although I think we should, I know that's probably the legal name for it, but it really is Animal Assistance. Those folks are out 24/7, helping stray animals, injured animals, get to the health that they need. And we had an experience this summer, that is a 24/7 job, no matter what folks think about it, it is there to help vulnerable animals that are left or found or lost or injured. Justice Court, again, handles the incredible volume with tremendously dedicated and professional staff of complaints, tickets. They also, I don't know if folks know, our justices are on call 24/7 for arraignments. It's, we don't hold people from Friday to Monday. People get disposed of, charges get disposed of, arrests are processed 24/7 by the staff there. All Hands on Housing, again, working on all the code amendments that mostly the Housing Department brings forth for changes in our codes to support affordable housing, both on private property and town developments. My key projects initiatives for this year are the grant that we received from the Department of State to, to plan for coastal resiliency out in an area of Montauk. I don't like to say just downtown Montauk because the area is larger, that includes key infrastructure, going up industrial roads, the fire department, and to look at how we can ensure resiliency through our building and zoning codes. That process, that grant is coming online in 2025 and was secured through the local waterfront revitalization plan that is overseen by the Waterfront Advisory Committee, and they will be coming in front of us as well for a update on their goals and what they do as we look to secure a grant for 2025 for the LWRP update. We, because we have LWRP, and one of the few communities in New York that do and have had one for decades, we are able to support, to fund projects and secure grants, and that's why a lot of these groups are important to us as well. Zoning Code Amendments is working on, we're coming back with another presentation on the formula for gross floor, maximum gross floor area, and then we'll also be working on, with the Planning, Natural Resources, Building Departments, Code Enforcement Departments, some contradictions and new code suggestions across the board that come directly from those departments, and they also participate in that group, Zoning Code Amendment Work Group. And then we'll be looking at some other code sections to work on in the future. So that work is ongoing. Wayne Scott Implementation Plan, I'd like to see, we presented that plan to the public. Also, I'd like to see that plan move forward into adoption, and then there is the $5 million that remains from the South Fork Wind Project that the Wayne Scott CAC is sending us suggestions for, and perhaps part of that can be used for implementation on that plan while we seek other funding sources, including capital projects through our own. Still working on ditch plains dune restoration, of course, we are navigating the permitting process, and David, that should be on your list as well, because you're also, as you guys say, co-parenting that project, and we are working with the DEC on getting the permitting for that project to move forward. A iconic estuary, again, that's grant funding opportunities that come our way. I'd also like to add on to this, and David, you said CDCH, and I'm not making a pitch, but I'd like it to be investigated. When we lost childcare opportunities for younger children at Montauk, we were able to provide it there at the Playhouse, pretty much instantaneously, and that was a blessing for all the families in East Hampton. What I learned through that process is that many young families who work in the western side of town or live in the western side of town have to travel back and forth to Montauk every day, as there's so few early childcare opportunities. I'd like to explore that, opening that up. I'd also like to explore the historical structure status for St. Matthew's Chapel as we continue to support our neighbors in Freetown and support the history there for our African-American neighbors. The three boards that are also incorporated into the Planning Board are the Land Use Boards, that's the ARB Planning Board, ZBA, continue to support those boards and continue the training that we began in 2024 for board members and staff for those boards. Again, the Litter Action Committee is working on a town-wide initiative, including that works with our messaging as well for an anti-litter campaign. The Sustainability Committee is an evolution of the Energy and Sustainability Committee. They'll be coming in for a presentation early on. I'll have a resolution on that evolves that Energy Sustainability Committee into a Sustainability Committee. And besides working on climate impacts, our energy goals across town will also inform our citizenry and our government on sustainability practices, composting, things that we talked to today, that have not only a hidden environmental cost, but an economic cross, an economic cost across our town. So that committee is evolving, and we're very excited about it as the members of the committee. Waterfront Advisory, as I said, is the codified committee that oversees the LWRP. Friends of Georgia Pond is a liaison, that's not a town committee, that's an outdoor group that has done tremendous amount of work in restoring Georgia Pond from a toxic pond to a viable pond. And I think there's also opportunity to look over to Wayne Scott Pond now that we have access to it and can use CPF funding there. So that group remains extremely important. And then with the new $600,000 grant is the development of the Coastal Resiliency Committee. That is a requirement of that grant, and we'll be coming forward and walking through the tasks to fruition of that grant. I'm also on the Special Events and Film Committee, that's an internal committee with members of, Tom is also on that committee, as he said, with the town clerks involved, public safety is involved in that, Police Department, and Fire Marshal. It is phenomenal, the amount of applications and special events that continues to grow, and as Tom said, we'll be bringing back a presentation early on for that as well. And I'll stop there.
Great. Thank you, Kate. Ian?
Yeah, I'm the liaison to Springs, which has been, I've had a great past year of doing that, and I really appreciate that opportunity. I live in Springs myself, and I find it to be just a very special place. I guess one of the highlights of my work in Springs generally, besides the CAC work, was we applied for a New York Forward Grant. We still don't know whether we'll be awarded, but just the process of applying for that with the help, and I got to give a large shout out to Sam Klein, and then a whole host of community members and business people who participated in that application process. And so whether we get that or not, if we get it, that's great, because there'll be a lot of funds to do great things in Springs. If we don't, I think we laid really good groundwork for working together as a, as a hamlet and a community for future projects, too. The departments I'm the liaison to are the Housing and Community Development, who I've worked with extensively this year. I'll talk more about that later on. The Tax Assessors and Tax Receivers, so I'm everybody's favorite there. You can, you can come straight to me with your tax complaints. And the Town Clerk, and the Town Clerk, Carol, I've known for years, and it's been great to be the liaison there, recently started talking about beach permits and perhaps license plate readers and how they might be a tool for us. It's in the early stages of development, but look forward to working with Carol this year. All Hands on Housing, that's been a large part of what I do in terms of, you know, my liaison departments is the Housing Department, there's so much going on. I'm the liaison to the Community Housing Advisory Board. We just spoke about the first RFAs this year, so the first funds will hopefully be given out from the Community Housing Fund to fund affordable projects, and that's been just a spectacular committee that I really look forward to working with in the coming year, refining that process and accruing even more funds to spend on much-needed projects. My key initiatives and projects are mostly in Springs. The Maidstone Playground has been in the works for too long, probably. I know, I think there's other, Kathy and Kate have both worked on this. This year, we made some good progress with the committee, and I think settled largely on a design. Tom, you'll be happy to know that several of the features will be ADA compatible, and we're trying to keep that in mind with the whole project, not the entirety of it, but it's certainly on the forefront of everybody's mind there. I hope to, we've had some issues frankly with the design and the vendor, but I hope to push that forward now that we're in the new year and complete that project this year if possible. The Old Stone Highway Culvert was another project that was in the works for a long time, and no Natural Resources and other departments had a, you know, do a lot with permitting for that. That project started in the fall, and it was a fairly visible project in terms of the Frag Mighty removal, but I'm happy to say that I had all positive feedback in terms of opening up that vista, and I think once the landscaping is finished and the bridge is shored up and repainted, I think it'll be a very positive project, and hopefully we'll finish that, well, I think we will finish that this spring. The Springs Library, I think it's a great place, another historic building in the heart of Springs that I think adds so much to the character. There's some work that needs to be done. We replaced a door and an entranceway that needed work last year. This year, I would like to make sure that some of the worst, the most deteriorated windows, historic windows can be fixed. I'm not sure if the public knows this, but the town owning a lot of historic buildings, you know, keeping historic windows maintained and fixed is a very challenging and expensive endeavor and something that I'm encountering with the structures in Springs, and even here at Town Hall, I know that others are dealing with that. So hopefully, we can fix the worst ones in Springs Library and get on a path towards, you know, long-term maintenance there. Parsons Blacksmith Shop, we went out to bid this year for a siding project that had been in the works. Unfortunately, none of the bins qualified. Talking with outside consultants and finance about how we can reshape, and genie about how we can reshape that bid to hopefully get the siding project done this year, and also putting a little bit more money in the capital end of things, so that the bids will hopefully meet the specs. Camp Hero Wastewater, this year, Tom Flight and I spoke with a number of residents from Camp Hero about, let's say, an affordable, was an affordable housing project in Montauk with a shared septic that has had some issues over the years. Natural Resources has worked with consultants to develop plans for low nitrogen systems. This is a very old system there, and so I think the possibility of upgrading to something that's more environmentally friendly, and also hopefully, you know, a cost savings for the residents over the long term, because it will function better. Again, we're in the early stages of that, but looking forward to working with Natural Resources and others in the town to meet with the residents to help determine their path forward on that. Springs Fireplace Road Corridor Study, this is a project that was initiated, and many board members have been on it, you know, working on that longer than me. I look forward to moving that forward. The town invested quite a bit of money, we've had a few presentations here. I hope to hear more from business members in that community. I've heard very little from the business community there. I have heard from residents and people that are big supporters of this study. As I said, we've spent a lot of money, I would like to move that forward, but just want to make sure we refine it. I welcome all sorts of input from my fellow board members, and I'm going to ask for help on guiding this forward, it's a big study. And I also just appeal again to anybody on that Springs corridor between sort of East Hampton and Springs, if you have any thoughts, please reach out. Don't wait until we talk about it next or are about to approve it and come with all the ideas. I would love to improve that and pass it this year if possible. Workforce Housing, this is something I'm very passionate about. I think we've all talked over the year and for a long time known that our community, we have an affordable housing problem here in town, and one of the results of that is we can't house our workforce, and that affects businesses, you know, long-term locals and everybody, really. So I want to address this in as many ways as possible. We've talked about a new use and employee housing development that I hope to bring back to discussion very, very soon. There's certainly complications with that, but I just want to make sure that we're driving this conversation and exploring all opportunities. I think there's going to be other things that I've been working with Eric Shantz in the Housing Department about maybe smaller developments that might also help address this. And then more generally, workforce housing, I think just having access to the Community Housing Funds and all the projects that are being generated by that will also address this need. So to me, this isn't a, you know, one piece of code will solve workforce housing, it's something we should keep in mind in everything we do, because I think if we can't house our middle class and the people who drive this community, we're in trouble. So I want to, I want to continue to work, as I know the rest of the board does, on that issue. The Boards, the Board of Assessment Review, it's a great group there. Frankly, they don't ask much of me. I'm happy to provide whatever support I can when they go into grievances, and I've got a great working relationship. Same with the Board of Ethics, largely operate independently, but I'm happy to Same with the Board of Ethics largely operate independently, but I'm happy to communicate them with whatever the board is doing every opportunity that I have. LTV, you know, I was a former board member at LTV. I think LTV provides such a great service to the town, not only in providing, you know, televising town board meetings and other board meetings, but also just, they're doing great work generally by hosting events, providing opportunities for people to do podcasts or host shows in their studios. It's a state-of-the-art facility that does need some work and repairs, but just super impressed with all that's going on there under the direction of Michael Clark and Josh Gladstone. And I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to be their liaison again. CHAB, I already mentioned, but Community Housing Advisory Board, Andrew Garvey is the chair. That's been just an exemplary committee and I think that Dave was largely the one who formed that group and it's just been such a strong working group and I can hope to continue that work as productive as they were this year. The CAC Springs, I've already said a lot about Springs, but just Lauren Bolger has been the chair.
Lost the LTV feed. So now we're back. Ian, it was wrapping up.
Yeah, I was just, very quickly, yeah, just mentioning the Springs Citizen Advisory Committee. Lauren Bolger is chair, you know, she and I have had a very good working relationship. As I've told them, you know, I envision my role as a liaison to inform them about what the town board is doing and bring their concerns and thoughts back to the town board. We don't always agree on everything, but I think we have a very healthy working relationship and I look forward to continuing that in 2025. A couple of citizen committees I'd like to mention, the Property Management Committee was one that I reformed last year that deals with historic buildings on town properties that aren't managed municipally. So things like the Dodge property, that's one that we're working on this year to try to make sure that we maintain and come up with a management plan for. There's several other properties as well that would include Brooks Park. Tom alluded to that earlier this meeting, but been a very good committee, look forward to continuing. And then Agricultural Advisory Committee, I'm the new liaison there. That's new for me, although previously I was the Planning Board Liaison to that committee and I've been involved since its inception. I know that group has done a lot of work. I look forward to listening to them and refining their plans and bringing things to discuss as they're ready before the board and mercifully, that's it.
All right, I'll make this quick. I'm the liaison to the Hamlet of East Hampton, so I'm also liaison to the East Hampton Sag Harbor CAC. The departments that directly report to me include the Town Attorney, the East Hampton Town Police Department and Marine Patrol, Emergency Services and Emergency Communications, our Finance Division, Human Resources and the East Hampton Town Airport. Like I had said earlier, my, the initiative I work on under All Hands on Housing is being liaison to the East Hampton Housing Authority. Some of the key projects and initiatives that I'm working on really is the, and I've made a comment about this, in the state of the town is it's really important that we have strong relationships with the other levels of government, federal, state, county and the villages. So I've spent a lot of time in that role. We're looking to modernize town government and where we can, we've been, you know, trying to take more credit cards and as Tom alluded to, I think that's going to help a great deal when we get to the Open Gov implementation. Overseal professional development and training across town departments. Also our wireless communications, we adopted that master plan into the town's comprehensive plan and working to get more small cell units and encourage the providers to build cell towers here where they are appropriate. And I'm also the point person on the Center for Modern Aging and Human Services. So the Boards that I, you know, work with, again, the Housing Authority, I'm also a member of the Suffolk County Supervisors Association and the East End Supervisors and Mayors Association. And those organizations each meet six times a year, but there's constant back and forth between Suffolk County Supervisors and the East End Supervisors and Mayors. You know, we collaborate in support of legislation and quite frequently send letters, you know, as a group to Albany. Also in the internal committees, I, we meet with the Public Safety right now, this time of year, we're meeting twice a month. Once May comes around, May through September, we're meeting weekly. And also we have a Capital Projects meeting. We were once a month, I think we're going to go to every other month to just make sure all departments, you know, are on board with projects so that there's strong coordination and collaboration with the team. And then there's a couple of folks that report directly to me and that would be Emergency Services, our Capital Projects Manager, our Safety Officer and our Public Information Officer. So that is what we're going to be sending around to all town department heads and it's now posted on the website so folks know where to go when they have public comment or want to, you know, have a complaint, whatever typically the liaison.
Or an atta boy.
Or an atta boy. We love atta boys. So that's.
At a girl.
At a person.
At a person. So there we have, our topics are wrapped up. So now, Tom, it's back to you for your liaison report.
Yeah, I'm against Citizens Advisory Committee, we'll be meeting February 10th. There'll be no meeting this January. Human Services, just some changes to our Wellness 60+ Program. 8:30 a.m. Chair Yoga has been moved to 11 a.m. as seniors wanted to get a later start. Zumba has been added to the schedule Monday and Friday at 10 a.m. Tuesday, January 14th at 1 p.m., there'll be a Jackson Pollock Painting Class. Senior Karate has been added to the schedule on Wednesdays at 10 a.m. First class begin Jan. 15th. Mindfulness Meditation has also been moved to a later time today, 1 p.m. on Wednesday. Bingo will take place on Alternative Tuesdays at 12:30 p.m. this Monday on January 7th. The January Activity Calendar is posted on the East Hampton Town website under the Human Services Department.
We also put it out on social media.
Correct. Yep. ADU Implementation, there'll be a meeting this Thursday where we will be beginning to draft the work session presentation. And I apologize because I forgot to give, oh, East Hampton Emergency Preparedness, I didn't actually give the overview of this one, but I'll combine it into two. So we will be looking to refresh the town emergency preparedness website and pamphlet in the first half of this year as well as conducting some tabletop training exercise. We're aiming, as I noted, to work with the fire hazards to do training reports on the town preparedness. And additionally, one thing we're going to look to do this year is a rotating schedule either by work session, social media or liaison reports of emergency preparedness themes for the year. And this is taken from the Ready.gov website. So January and February will be focused on winter readiness. March, we'll be looking at flood safety. April, we'll be looking at severe weather safety. May, we will do presentations on national hurricane preparedness and wildfires. June is about pet preparedness and extreme heat safety. July will be firework safety. August will be back-to-school safety and international overdose awareness. September is National Preparedness Month to remind everyone preparing emergencies and disasters can keep them safe. October is fire prevention and cybersecurity. November will be winter weather safety and December will be holiday fire safety and resolve to be ready. One other note here is that Montauk Fire Department has organized to do a Red Cross Shelter Operator Training, January 18th at 9 a.m. And then lastly, tick control, you know, we just forgot to mention that one, but you know, the goal here is really to establish a town webpage with links, information of relevant disease threats, tick life cycle, human tick interactions, tick control measures, and those will be reviewed by the committee.
Thank you.
East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue had their annual meeting this past Sunday. They have, we have a new chief of the East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue, Andrew Trigvivich, Trigvivich, excuse me, I sorry, Andrew, Andy. He's the new chief. He was the first assistant chief last time. I also want to thank Barnaby Friedman for his years of service as the chief of the East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue. They've done some great work. At this meeting, they also gave out two awards, one to our Carleen Meeks for the Eddie Would Go Award, that's individual that would go out in all conditions and give her a bet, to give their best. And also to Jason Tuma, who is a Member of the Year recognition for the member who has put in the most time to many different aspects of the East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue Squad. I'll get more information if you like also, maybe we can put that out on social media. Slips Committee Meeting, we, so Montauk CAC is not meeting this month and neither is the Nature Preserve Committee. The Slips Committee met last year, also known as the Harbors and Docks Review Committee. A couple of the things that are coming out of that is that they're in agreement to recommend to the town board to move the commercial and rec slip permitting process from the clerk's office to the Marine Patrol, Marine Patrol Office. This then will be moving on to Open Gov when that gets instituted. Right now it'll be more pen and paper, but to Open Gov and moving that ahead for this calendar season, the Clerk's Department, Marine Patrol and legally we've all been discussing that. Also in this meeting was some of our final discussions about recommendations to the town board about the re-institution, the town underwater lease programs that we have, particularly mostly in Lake Montauk. Some of them have gone back since the 1980s, but haven't been, haven't been reevaluated or actually instituted in a couple decades. So we're going to be moving forward and then I have some recommendations to come to the town board on that also. That brings me up to the Army Corps of Engineers Inlet Dredging Project. We are having, I would deem it as an emergency there. The Montauk Inlet right now is shoaling up due to such eastern winds right now that many boats are having a very difficult time getting in and out of that harbor. To a point right now, either they're touching bottom or coming very close to limited access to the harbor right now. the harbor right now. This is providing a real hardship to our commercial fishing industry and also the shoreside industries that actually support them, anything from packing ice houses or even grub, meaning where they grab their food. I've been in contact with our Congressman LaLotta's office and also Senator Schumer's office on there to try to press on this, because right now, it is deemed, it is in the process to be done through, during the window for dredging for late fall. I would like to continue to press on this to see if they can take it out of their typical procurement in the windows as this might, as it can be deemed as an emergency as soon as possible. So, Madam Supervisor, I will be needing some more help with that then too, we'll continue to press on that because it is affecting now where individuals are home partying their boats right now and life and safety. I've also been in contact with our Coast Guard Officer in Charge and Coast Guard Station Montauk, and he agrees with this right now, and also with our Senior Harbor Master too. Anyone wants to discuss that with me further, please contact me also. Let's see here, the Playhouse and the Second House Updates, I think I mentioned that a little bit more, but one, actually, well, talking about Senator, do you mind if I take this?
No, go ahead.
Okay. And
I can
That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
So I'm
Me next?
Yes. Okay, so ditch planes were in the permitting, permitting process, as I mentioned before, with the DEC, that's an ongoing process. The Wayne Scott Citizen Advisory Committee, I mentioned some of the topics that are important to the folks in Wayne Scott, we have a new chair. Hershey Eggington stepped up, and he did a great job on Saturday. It was a very warm meeting, even though it was cold outside. I know that the members of the Traffic Safety Subcommittee have been to meet with all of you, and I am going to get them updated maps on their proposal for stop signs and crosswalks that we're moving forward with. They also brought back from their discussions with you a very good, another detail of traffic safety that we should probably not just look in, at Wayne Scott, but everywhere in town, is that, is that of the sightlines for when we pull up to our intersections being blocked by vegetation that now is in our road right of ways where it doesn't belong, and clearing those out for safety for sightlines for when you're pulling up to a stop sign, some places you have to pull halfway out into the lane before you can actually see, and
It's been my experience that when homeowners call the Highway Department, they take care of it.
Yes, that is true, so maybe looking at just clearing up by those intersections or getting an education program, more folks call up when, when they identify this, it's hard for us to know what's going on in every intersection of the town. They also spoke about the amount of garbage at their 27 traffic stop up there, the rest stop that is run by the state, the state doesn't want to put receptacles there, and it picks up quite a bit of refuse. So they're talking about finding out some information about working with the state to get some of their receptacles, or actually why there was a rest stop there, and I thought that was an interesting question. I met with members of the Waterfront Advisory Committee to talk about their presentation they're hoping to do in front of the Town Board in February, and I met with members of the Zoning Code Amendments Work Group to work on our next presentation in front of this board late January, and that's what I have.
Great, thank you. Ian?
Yeah, just a very brief report, the Ag Advisory Committee meets tomorrow, Thursday at 5 p.m. at the, I'm sorry, not tomorrow, Thursday, 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 at the Department of Land Management at 5 p.m., that's just next door, just to the west of Town Hall. And the only other thing I have, well, two, two more, I guess, the Ocean Rescue, there was recently law signed into legislation, I think the end of December, to give Ocean Rescue members break on their taxes, similar to EMTs and firefighters. I would like to try to push, and this is the first I'm talking to the board about, I'd like to push that forward as quickly as possible. I think we've got to amend a local law or change a local law here, and then it's got to go through public hearing and all the normal process, but I'm grateful to Fred Thiel for offering that piece of legislation. I think he's always looking out for us out here and for the governor signing it. Again, I think it's much, much deserved. Lastly, the ADUs, we've encountered some issues with our affordable housing lots, the ground lease that I think was written in such a way to prevent people from renting their affordable housing for profit, is now interfering with their ability to apply for ADUs when they otherwise meet the dimensional and all the other regulations, and this is something I'd like to talk more about. So long as the owner is living on site, which I think was the initial intent, do we really have a problem with an affordable, you know, homeowner having an ADU if they have the space and all the other stuff? I personally don't have a problem with that and would like to push it forward, so I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, I'll be following up very quickly. That's it.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to say, last month, the town announced the dedication of the Stephen Hans Path Recreational Facility in honor of now-retired New York State Assemblyman Fred Thiel. That dedication had to be rescheduled, and it's now on for this Friday, January 10th at 1 p.m. at the, right there on Stephen Hans Path, and this is to pay tribute to Fred for his nearly five decades of public service. Talked about, it's funny, you guys didn't have CAC meetings this month. We were supposed to have an East Hampton Sag Harbor CAC meeting last month, and I was driving back from a meeting in Riverhead, and on the police radio, I could hear how many accidents were happening, and this was like in the four to five p.m. time period. I spoke to the chief this morning, there were 12 accidents in an hour and 15-minute period. Some cars got stuck on Acabonic Highway, they had to close a portion of Acabonic because of it, and so I, you know, made a decision to cancel the meeting because I didn't need folks putting themselves in jeopardy because of the, you know, the ice and whatnot. Meanwhile, the Highway Department had been out since 2 o'clock in the afternoon, sanding and salting the roads. So we are going to be rescheduling that meeting, and because of the availability of this room, we may be doing our Monday, our January meeting via Zoom. The meeting I was coming back from, from Riverhead, was the East End Supervisors Round Table. Supervisor Al Kropsky had put a call out to all of the East End Supervisors to see if we could meet and just talk about where each town is with their affordable housing efforts, and Eric Shantz joined me as Director of Housing, and it was just interesting to hear how other communities are tackling the affordable housing crisis. And then this Thursday, so it's like all housing all the time for the month, for the, this week for Eric and myself, we're going to be panelists at the Express Sessions in Southampton on Thursday. The topic is the Year of Community Housing Fund, grading the Nason Community Housing Fund. And then I believe Eric's getting interviewed on Friday on LTV on the new housing show that Christina DiSanti and Michael Daly have, so obviously the community is very interested in our plans. And then lastly, over the next few weeks, we're going to be reviewing the Capital, 2025 Capital Plan Requests that came in from department heads, and hopefully in February, we'll have a Town Board Work Session where we can review the recommendations. So that's what I have, we now have a handful of resolutions. Tom, if you could start us off.
Yes, absolutely. 2025-104 is a warrant approval, claims for special warrant SWSHEA in the amount of $1,236,381.24 was ordered by the Town Board and supervisors hereby directed to pay the same.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Carol, who does it make it easier for, to do David's resolutions? He's on the phone with Schumer's office, so I don't know.
Yep, sure.
Yeah, would you do them, Tom?
I'll second, yeah.
2025 is appointments, is to appointment and promotion of full-time labor crew leader in the Parks Department, Lee Colombo, whereas in accordance with the CSA contract, position being posted number 2025-01, Lee Colombo has required for location position, now be resolved that Lee Colombo is appointed to the full-time position of Labor Crew Leader in the Parks Department at a rate of $35.91, which is $74,697.58 annually for a 40-hour week to be paid biweekly.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
2025-106 is the appointment promotion to full-time crew leader in the Buildings and Grounds Department for Derek Miller, whereas in accordance with the CSA contract, position was posted number 2025-02 on December 12th, and Derek Miller has required for location position, now therefore be resolved that Derek Miller is hereby appointed to full-time position of Labor Crew Leader and Building and Grounds Department at a rate of $35, sorry, $36.58, annualized at $76,088.06 for a 40-hour work week to be paid biweekly.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
2025-107 is the provisional appointment or promotion to Senior Environmental Analyst for Samir Yunus, whereas in accordance to CSA, the contract position was posted 2025-05, and Samir Yunus meets the required qualification positions, now would therefore be resolved that Samir Yunus is hereby promoted on a provisional basis to the full-time position of Senior Environmental Analyst in the Agriculture Department at the hourly rate of $38.44, annualized at $79,954.78 for a 40-hour work week to be paid biweekly.
Second.
Second, all in favor.
Aye. All right, if you could pick up at 108.
I will, thank you very much. One, oh wait, we are happy, well, not really, I'll take this one back. We are termination of 2024 seasonal recreational employees' names, positions listed below and the dates of their termination.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
2025-109 is the 2025 CSC Schedule A, add Assistant Waterways Management Supervisor to, to this to reflect the addition of the Assistant Waterways Manager Supervisor, grade 29, starting step in the 2025, is $35.93 per hour, effective January 3rd, 2025.
Second, all in favor.
Aye, I think we are all very happy to offer Resolution 2025-110, this is accept the bid for EH number 24049, this is the Stephen Hans Path Multi-Use Field to the Land Tech Group LLC, their bid was reviewed by our senior purchasing agent, and L.K. McLean, accepted a total cost of $2248,350 of the base bid, with all, with all, one of the bleachers, bleachers, one 20 scoreboard, $60,000, the lighting at $411,000, for a total cost of
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
2025-111, and it's a 2024 budget modification for Buildings and Grounds, in which we are bringing $25,000 from public information and $15,000 from full-time salaries to light and power in the same, in the amount of $40,000.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
112 is a 2024 budget modification for the Highway Department, where we're bringing $2,000 from subcontractor costs to $2,000 for repairs in general.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 113, this is list appointment to Building Permits Examiner for Michael Shermyer, and this is resolved that Michael Shermyer is hereby appointed to the full-time position of Building Permits Examiner in the Building Department at an hourly rate of $32.64, which is $67,886.42 annually, and this will be effective January 13th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 2025-114, and this is a list appointment in promotion to Senior Account Clerk at the Airport, Bridget Canavan, and this is for an annual salary of $62,894.62 for a 40-hour work week, effective retroactive to January 1st.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
115 is to amend CSA Schedule A in the 2025 adopted budget, and this is as reflected in the adopted 2025 annual budget, and effective retroactive to January 1st, 2025, and it's a list of everyone that had a regrade.
Second.
All in favor. Back to you, Tom.
Thank you. 2025-116 is accepting of bids, accepting of bid EH 24051 for food services and kitchen wear items for December 2024. These were awarded to Samtel and Sun Inc. and Pueblo Hotel Supply, resolved that the bid for Samtel and Sun Inc. is hereby accepted for items listed below, and the bid of Pueblo Hotel Supply DBA Grady's for items listed below is also accepted.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 117 is to approve first-time homebuyer assistance for Christopher and Haley Chinkway in the amount of $30,000.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 118 is to approve first-time homebuyer's assistance for David Gaviola in the amount of $30,000.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. And Resolution 119 is to approve first-time homebuyer's assistance for Robin Soda in the amount of $30,000.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All right, those are all the resolutions, I believe that's the seventh
Yep.
First-time homebuyer assistance that we've done.
And things are really heating up, I think that Joanne and Eric and that whole office have been working with applicants, people are knowing more about it, and I anticipate more, more applications, it's great.
Awesome. Okay, do I have a motion to go into exec session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for CPF, Personnel, Contracts, and Litigation.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and thank you, LTV, and we appreciate you getting back, us back on air.
Absolutely, thank you, guys.